Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this session of Kispamcis Town Council. I am looking for an approval of the agenda, please. It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Councillor Donovan. On the question, seeing there are none, please vote now. If you don't have your computers up, you can show of hands, yes? Okay. Motion carried. Six zero. Thank you. My comments this evening, I would like to recognize the James Smith Cree Nation and the nearby community of Weldon, northeast of Saskatoon, for the loss of ten lives and the harm that was brought to eighteen other innocent people in a killing rampage. Our hearts for these communities go out to all. And on behalf of the residents of Kispamcis and everyone here this evening, I would like to express our heartfelt condolences to family and friends of the deceased, and we wish healing for those that are suffering, both in body and in mind. Sunday was a sad day for Saskatchewan and for all Canadians. I'd also like to ask Councillor Locke to do the treaty acknowledgement, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. We would like to respectfully acknowledge that Kispamcis exists on the traditional territory of the Wallisdeque, Malacite, and Mi'kmaq people, whose ancestors, along with past Makwati tribes, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s. We would like to take this moment to pay respect to the elders, past and present, and the descendants of this traditional territory. We would also like to take this moment to reflect on our solidarity and support for the people of Ukraine, acknowledging that Canada has the third-largest Ukrainian population in the world, behind Ukraine itself and Russia. And may we find ourselves of the important, I'm sorry, and may we remind ourselves of the important work we have before us tonight, may we make good decisions without prejudice or bias, and always in the best interest of our community, which we are here to serve.
Thank you, Councillor Locke. I am looking for disclosure of interests, and I will be removing myself from the chair for item five C. Next is presentations. This evening, we have some ultimate athletes with us, and it's a great pleasure to welcome you here. You have reached the pinnacle of athleticism for our community and for yourselves. To represent New Brunswick in the Canada Games that you just took part in is certainly something that not too many other people can say that they have achieved, so I hope that you feel the pride that we feel in the accomplishment that you have made. I'm going to call the names of all of the athletes that represented Kispamcis and New Brunswick, and I hope that if you are here this evening and you hear your name, that you will stand, please, so we can applaud all of you at the end. Julia LeBlanc, Lou Gadept, Craig Thorne, Bill McMacken, coach, Spencer Johnson, Paige Fletcher, Avia Matthews, Morgan McKinnon, Nate Watson, Kira Hector, Matthew Mallett, Jana Como, manager, Kelly Taylor, representing golf, Jacob Woodward, soccer females, Lauren Adams, Ali Cross, soccer male, Danielle Amarouche, softball female, Hannah Fortin, Kate Parker, Gabby Sanford, Sammy Tong, Stacy Bla, coach, for swimming, Brian Woods, coach, Kelly Nadeau, tennis, Kate Nadeau, tennis, triathlon, Lydia Bodichan, mission staff, Toby Burke, Amy Sirar Law. And this evening, we'd like to, I don't know if I missed any. Did I get everyone that was represented? So this evening, on behalf of council, it gives me great pleasure to welcome you here this evening as coaches and athletes in the recent 2022 Canada Summer Games at this meeting to formally recognize, honor, and congratulate you as the athletes here in Kispamcis. So on behalf of the residents of Kispamcis, we are very proud of you, and congratulations on all that you accomplished this summer. Thank you for being here this evening. You're most welcome to stay. If you would like to leave, you're welcome to leave as well. And I hope that you have a wonderful school year and that you will continue in your athletics throughout the coming year.
I would move that Kispamcis athletes and coaches who participated in the 2022 Canada Summer Games this past August in Ontario's Niagara region, representing the highest level of national competition for Canadian athletes, be recognized and congratulated for a job well done.
Thank you. It was moved by councillor, or by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Councillor Olson. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried, six zero. Item five B, Envision St. John, Place Brand Update. In attendance, Pauline Hicks, CEO, and Gillian McKinnon, VP of Marketing, Communications, and Strategic Initiatives. Welcome this evening, ladies.
And we do have an update with respect to a presentation on our place brand, and I'm really pleased that Gillian McKinnon, our Vice President of Sales, Marketing, and Strategic Initiatives, will actually lead that presentation, and then we will be here for questions. Gillian.
Thanks very much. We're really excited to be here. One of the things that we learned very quickly when Paulette joined the organization, she did a listening tour throughout the region, and the importance of a place brand was really heard across every sector, every employer, everybody that we talked about, that we talked to, how are we going to market the region and promote ourselves? So we're really excited to share with you the work that's been done over the past eighteen to twenty months in this regard. So Erin, I'm going to get you to jump right through to, you can go back to one, the vision, and it's kind of showing up funny on that screen, so my apologies for that. But at Envision, at Envision St. John, you know, our vision is to be a growing, vibrant, dynamic region. A good part of our work is our core service around marketing and sales. So Erin, if you advance the slide. We have three pillars of growth. We're really focused on attracting population. That can be students, immigrants, repatriated residents, workers. We are focused on attracting business, whether that's entrepreneurs, investment attraction, or real estate development. And of course, we have a focus on destination, which is regional, national, and international visitors. That could be leisure travelers, meetings and conventions, delegates, sports, tours, and participants, et cetera. So we do have a complex brand ecosystem. So you can see, we have three different brands that we are managing. We would have our place brand, which is what we're really going to talk about today, and that's the brand that's really focused on attracting people to work, live, study, and invest. You'll see the destination brand, that's really about attracting visitors to the region. On the Regional Growth Agency, so that's, you know, we are relatively new agency, and we want people to know who we are as well. We are the growth engine services for the region. You can see there's a bit of an overlap in the middle. Some of what we present to potential visitors is certainly relevant to people when they're looking at new places to live as it relates to quality of life. There's enough differentiation in the information that they're looking for that you really do need a place brand. So we, you know, we're going to continue to have a destination brand, which was Discover St. John and the Towns by the Bay, which we launched in 2021. But as we're attracting business, people to live here, real estate developers, we do really need a strong place brand. So, and one more, yeah. So a place brand. I'm going to read a couple of these slides, sorry. A distinct, authentic, memorable representation of the St. John region. It's the aspirational North Star that captures hearts and minds, enlisting supporters, attracting investors, and motivating those who can activate growth. It's a paramount brand element in the Envision St. John positioning ecosystem, living in balance with the agency and the destination brands. So as you saw in the previous slide where we had the Venn diagram, this is really the most important brand that you're going to see tonight. This is really what the focus is about. We talked about the listening tour that Paulette went on. We also had validation through our strategic vision that was developed in 2021. We heard validation of the things that Paulette heard around the need for a brand. So we then decided that we would go to market research. So we were going to lean into the natural assets that we had in the region. We took what we heard on the listening tour through the strategic vision, and we pulled together some visioning boards that we took to market, because we knew that if we were to develop a place brand, it couldn't be developed from the inside out. Really had to be something that was embraced by the region, they felt that it was authentic and true, and some of the words that I just used, that it was memorable, unique, we want to own that brand. So Erin, you can advance to the next one. Even, go ahead, we'll jump ahead. So we did engage narrative research, and we went out and we surveyed four hundred and seven people within the region and the rest of Southern New Brunswick. It was about a fifty-fifty percent split, fifty percent in the region, fifty percent out. And then at the bottom there, you'll see there's a description. We tested actually three different mood boards. The photos go with it, but here was the narrative that was put in front of the research participants. The St. John region has a proven track record of forward thinking, with Canada's first incorporated city at its core, and many notable firsts to its name. Today, St. John is much more than just a city, it's a unique region, united by history, pride of place, and a shared vision for future growth. Here you will find the winning mentality that comes from years of being first. The region continues to write its next chapter of growth, and we invite you to be part of it. So that was the mood board, the narrative and the images that resonated most, or best with those who live within the region and those who are outside the region but know the St. John region. So Erin, if you can advance it again. We took that value proposition, or that mood board, and modernized it a bit. So it's now our brand promise for the region, always moving forward. So if you go again, one more, yeah. So this is going to sound similar, but this is what we are going to be using going forward as our place brand. The next few slides that you see, it's a little bit of inside baseball, as we like to say in the office. These are not things that you're going to see out in the public, but it's guiding all of the work that we do as a marketing and sales agency. So all of the marketing communications materials, our videos, our website is guided by this brand promise, and some of the slides I'm about to take you through. So our brand promise, always moving forward. The St. John region has a proven track record of forward thinking, with Canada's first incorporated city at its core, and many notable firsts to its name, Canada's first bank, newspaper, museum, to name just a few. Today, ours is a region united by pride of place and a strong determination to ensure future growth. At its heart, a truly vibrant, modern city with a major port, within driving distance, bountiful nature, and characterful communities. Here you will find a modernity grown organically and authentically from the roots of past success. You will find people who appreciate the region's many assets, people who visualize and invent, working to make plans a reality with a deep-held confidence that moves us ever forward. So that's our brand promise, as we are out marketing and even the way people behave within the region. So, you know, a place brand is not just a marketing campaign, it's around, you know, how we aspire to deliver an experience, which is the next slide. Erin, if you can put it up. So when people are engaging with their region, we want them to feel inspired and empowered. Every interaction with the St. John region will leave you feeling like anything is possible, and that this is the place to do it. You will feel inspired by the region's rich history of successes and invigorated by its fresh vision for the future. Anytime you see or hear a name, you will get the sense that more is possible, in your lifestyle, your job or business, your investment or area of study, you will feel like you can pursue your ambitions here and that you'll be supported every step of the way. You will feel empowered, you will feel like you belong, and you will be left with no doubt that you can grow here. So that's the experience that we're hoping that people are going to have when they're in the region. So, you know, the place brand has to be owned and embraced by everybody, so this is the type of thing that we're socializing with a number of, you know, businesses, organizations throughout the St. John region right now, so we're pleased that you're seeing it tonight as well. Brand values. I'm not going to read through this one, but you can see some of the words that came up through the research. You know, authenticity, momentum, possibility, vibrancy, and balance, were some of the key words that came up there. This would be the brand personality for the region, confident and encouraging. How would you know the St. John region if you met on a street corner? The first thing you would notice would be our openness and enthusiasm. We are that person who makes you feel better about yourself in every interaction. When a place is comfortable in its own skin, it's easy to be inviting to others and open to new ideas. We are proud of our home and the lifestyle and opportunities it offers, and we are excited to have you be part of it. In short, we are real, natural, and authentic. We are true to ourselves and continually inspired by the wave of momentum we have created. We are ready to say, welcome, let's go. Erin? And then our persona. You know, we're really known as gritty go-getters, or we believe that we are known as gritty go-getters here in the St. John region. We just love to roll up our sleeves and get things done. Our preferred timeline, since yesterday isn't an option, we'll go with right now. You see, not only are we strategic planners, we're also diligent doers. And what we've developed is an actual word mark, which I'm going to read through the next slide, Erin, actually, the St. John region. I'm going to read some of the notes from the creative designer behind this word mark. So the St. John region word mark was created to reflect the connected nature and forward momentum of St. John and its surrounding communities. The extended I, reaching into the H, represents our togetherness as a people, as a place, and in our vision for the future. It represents connections on an individual, community, and intermunicipal level, as well as our connection with nature. Just like our region, the typeface is friendly and approachable, modern and streamlined, but rooted in classic font styles, just as we are rooted in history. The directional arrow reaches ahead from the T, representing a region that is forward-thinking, poised for future growth, and always moving forward. Next slide. And then you could see some sample creative and the way that this is actually going to be used as we are out marketing and selling the region. One thing I will let you know is that we are doing a campaign here within the St. John region that you'll see within the next couple of weeks. Our launch date for that is September the nineteenth. So we will be helping to create ambassadors within our own region who are hearing the great things that are happening and the momentum that's happening within our region so that they too can sell and market the region using this place brand. And you'll notice that our hashtag, always moving forward, has been adopted by some, some municipalities are using it, some associations, the port, so it's something that the town of Kispamcis, we hope, will adopt quickly into their social platforms as well. And I think I'm almost out of time. So, marketing infrastructure, Erin, I don't think we need to go through, you can flip through the slide, but again, it was just a reminder of the three different lanes that we're kind of playing in, population, business, and visitor. Did I do it within ten minutes? So I apologize if I was jumbling my words, I was conscious of getting through that, but if there's any questions, I'll invite Paulette back up.
Thank you very much, Gillian. Welcome to the podium, Paulette. And certainly, you know, this is exciting that this was carved out a couple of years ago and that it's moving forward as well as it has. And I guess one of my questions before I open it up, are you doing anything in, I guess when we bring people to our community, it's really important to have the support of family physicians. Are you doing anything in that light in the near future?
We are, actually, so I don't know if you want to talk about the initiative. So we have, it'll be actually our first time as a full region going out from a sales, marketing, and a strategy perspective, but there is an event happening in St. Andrews whereby Dalmed is hosting their second-year residence. So we actually will show up as a full region and using our place brand saying, why the St. John region? Let us tell you why the St. John region. So it certainly is going to be a research and development piece for us. I mean, we're using a bit of the playbook from tourism where we're used to hosting clients and events, and now we're applying that on something very specific around our talent strategy, which is how do we attract more healthcare workers, but specifically doctors? So that'll actually happen this fall.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Now, if council has any further questions for either Gillian or Paulette, Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Well, thank you, Your Worship. Thank you for the presentation. It was very quick, a lot of meat in there, but it's, I like it. It's, I like the new logo, I think it's great with the arrow pointing forward, and I'm sure our town will probably jump on that right away and start using it. One thing that I found sort of curious was, I like the concept of the towns by the bay. I guess what struck me is a lot is when you drive in, the billboard for Envision St. John is past the towns, and it's just by St. John. And I thought, well, you've already passed the towns by the bay, or two of them, which would be Kispamcis and Rosay. So I, that was curious why that was positioned there and not before the town, so people go, oh, these are the towns by the bay.
I think, very good point, and just so you know, we're going to be updating those here probably before the end of the month, now that we do have our new place brand. So, so those are signs that are actually owned by us, so they're not billboards that we actually purchased. So the location is before the towns, but we do use it as an opportunity to introduce that tourism brand last year. But now that we do have a place brand, it's going to have the St. John region on it, always moving forward. Does that answer your question?
They're not moving. So I think one point to acknowledge is, as Envision St. John stood up, we did bring forward the legacy work. So the billboards are permanent location, and they were actually owned by the legacy agency, Discover, they've been there for years. So I think to Gillian's point, the billboard is not something that can be moved, but what I will say is, on the west side, as you come in, you have that same message, and as you come into Fredericton, you have that same message. So you're seeing a consistent message about welcoming people to the St. John region and the towns by the bay. So either direction that they come in, we are having those touchpoints, but to your point, we don't own billboards that are further out, but we are being very deliberate on how we send that message out. And again, to Gillian's point, the messaging on those strategic billboards actually will change to the place brand, we will update those. So I hope that's helpful.
Thank you. Maybe we could check with Hampton and see if they own a billboard just before their town, and we could share that with them. Councillor Miller.
Thank you, Worship, and thank both of you for presentation. I've seen a lot of growth and change over the last few years, and it's quite encouraging. I would actually just like to tag on to both the mayor and the deputy mayor's questions, so I'll start with the doctor one. I know it's about recruiting, but what better way recruiting them when they first sign up for med school? We've got Dalhousie, Dalhousie University, the St. John. I mean, obviously, we've got to talk about getting more seats in there and things like that, but I think that's where you try to encapsulate them or get them to try to stay in the St. John region, whether it's some type of extra scholarship, I don't know, but I think you got to start earlier. More seats is better, but we don't have those seats, but that could be one of them. And on the deputy mayor's comment, I really like that idea, so we don't need St. John by the bay when you come here, but we might have a billboard that says, Kispamcis and the towns by the bay, so it's kind of, kind of the same theme throughout, because until the deputy mayor stated that, it's like, I thought of that as I was going into 506 there on Sunday, it's exactly that thought, so. But, so a question, kind of a suggestion about the doctors and the other ones, so it's, but thank you very much for what you're doing, I've seen some great stuff over the last few years, thanks.
Folks, thank you for your comments and your questions. It is an exciting time, we are certainly feeling the momentum of growth. I am going to comment on the doctor piece, because you're right, I think, you know, this region, we've demonstrated for years a very strong playbook, and I talk about tourism because we've been in the tourism business. And I think the opportunity that we have in the agency certainly is the piece around attracting talent and specifically around doctors, and the fact that we have Dalmed here in our backyard, we have now embraced a relationship with them, talking about building out a strategy, and you're right, how do we capture them when they first hear? Really great when we entertain clients from a tourism perspective, and we bring them in, and, you know, we familiarize them with all the great things that we can do. We should be applying that same book, that playbook, to when students come in, especially when we look at attracting doctors to stay here, you know, what better opportunity we have. I'm going to pass it over to Gillian to talk about brand integrity, because I think to your point on the piece around St. John's and the towns around the bay, it is part of the brand infrastructure. So I think, you know, the point around Kispam, there's some pieces to that that I think we just have to stay true to.
Yeah, so, you know, when we have the brand, it's really about the region, so St. John is, you know, the core of the region and the towns around it. So the tourism brand will be Discover St. John and the towns by the bay, but certainly, you know, if you go on our tourism website, or even on our Envision St. John website, you'll see that each of the towns is highlighted very well, so even if somebody types in Discover St. John and the towns by the bay, they're going to find lots of information about Kispamcis. And actually, on that note, I would encourage anybody that hasn't looked at Envision St. John's website in the past few months, we launched a new website in May, and it was a labor of love, and we're really proud of it. It required a lot of, we wound down, you know, three other websites when Envision St. John came to be, so we were really building from scratch, and we worked very, very hard on developing the why the St. John region. So we've really tried to position and highlight, you know, the value proposition for those who are looking to invest, those who are looking to live, and those who are looking to visit. So I encourage you to check that out on there, you'll also find what we call Dashboard 1.0, which is a measure of the health and wealth of the region, so there's some data on there that's of interest probably to you and your constituents. We'll be launching a more fulsome dashboard on that website before the year end as well. So, anyway, so thank you for your suggestion, but I do want you to know that each of the towns is very well represented on any of our materials.
Thank you very much. We'll go to the next councillor, Olson, please. I'll go back to you, Kirk, in just a sec.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you for the presentation. It's great to see the, all the words coming together and lots of action taking place. I've got a couple of suggestions. I'm looking at the sign up there right now, and a picture's worth a thousand words, okay? And we get a lot of traffic on our highways coming north, south, east, and west, and if you had that sign, like so, you know, the St. John region, Visage, whatever, and that arrow points to all the towns and areas that are involved with it. I don't know if that's able to be done, but it looks, you know, like, people don't look at their computers initially, like, but if you're driving through or area, well, we're in St. John, but did we pass through everybody that's represented here or something? It's just a quick reference that you might see just It's just a quick reference that you might see just the first, the first exposure to it, if you want.
No, it's a good suggestion.
You know, because the, the arrow kind of points you to a blind side of the sign where you could capture some information.
Yeah, it's, it's funny that you suggest that. I was in, uh, Charlottetown on the weekend and they do a really good, um, job with their signage in their downtown core, like making sure that everybody's aware of all the different attractions. So I don't know how we could do that or what we could do with it, but certainly I've noted it because that's along the lines of even what I experienced on the weekend. So I appreciate the comment.
Well, that was my own idea. I didn't seek, uh, prince of Ireland.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. Next in line, uh, Counselor Miller.
No, thank you, worship. But I just wanted to follow up when, when I stayed about doctors. I, I just don't want to just isolate doctors because we need nurses, we need everything else because, you know, some of the reasons why people are waiting many years now for certain surgeries is just not the doctor or C O R time, which means you don't have the nurses, you don't have the support staff. So it's, uh, it's bigger than just the doctors, I guess.
No, that, that's, uh, that point's well taken. In fact, uh, part of the agency work is the full talent strategy that leads into growth readiness. So the talent strategy is everywhere. I mean, when I, Gillian references, you know, me going out on a listening tour, there, that was the number one thing that I heard from every small business, big business, different sectors, tech sector, healthcare is talent. Um, that's really the barrier to growth if we don't attract talent. So even our relationships, working with, uh, U N B, New Brunswick Community College, uh, working with District Eight, like this really is about a plan, you know, not for tomorrow, but for the next five years, 10 years, 20 years. What are the careers of our region that we're going to be very ownable? So whether even that's the port and the expansion happening at the port, the only barrier to the expansion at the port is actually attracting the talent to fill, you know, 500 to 800 jobs in the next couple of years. So to your point, I think it is something that, uh, the, the agency is, um, leaning into in a really significant way with all of our partners to really understand, but actually build a strong strategy for the region. So your point is well taken.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Miller? Counselor Donovan, please.
Thank you. Um, thanks so much for your presentation. Uh, the one sort of suggestion or question or idea that I have for you is, um, you mentioned that you work with the university a lot, um, and maybe M B C C as well. Um, have you ever thought, I believe when you get like a confirmation letter that says, you know, you've been accepted to U N B S J, have you ever thought of putting like, um, or like partnering with U N B S J or M B C C to put like a pamphlet in it that says, you know, you're coming to the St. John region with like some cool things or ideas? Because I know if I was, you know, say I was in Toronto or something and I get a letter that says, you know, welcome to U N B S J, and then down below it was, you know, the St. John and the towns by the bay, or, uh, you know, the St. John region, then I could show my parents or my friends and be like, you know, this is where I'm going. So maybe that's an idea or suggestion. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And, and it's funny, we were just talking about that thing, exact thing today. So we do work closely with both the university and M B C C. And now that we have a place brand and now that we have a brand book and now that we're starting to rule it out, it allows us to actually produce some marketing materials that could be for specific audiences. So certainly, um, in our sights for 2023, we'll see what we can maybe get done in the fall here of 2022, but, um, e- exactly, that's right on the money for what we want to use this for.
Yeah. And just to build on that, uh, as we're presenting to you tonight, we've also been presenting to the leadership groups and one in particular was U N B, who actually had their recruitment team there. So they were saying, finally, we have some assets and a toolkit, um, that really represents who we are because it's not just attracting them as students. How do we make it sticky so they actually want to live here, build roots, and we grow our population, which you know is the 10-year goal is to grow our population by 25,000 people. So I think, you know, you're, you're spot on. That's the type of work that we're doing and, and it really is about making sure that our message is true, it rings true, and that people are proud to come here, but we really want to make sure that they stay here.
Thank you. Counselor Donovan, did you have a follow-up? Go ahead.
Uh, thanks. And, uh, just on a separate note, um, I had the opportunity to, um, fly to Regina for the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Conference, um, a little while ago during the summer. And, um, could, the only reason I remember this because, uh, one of you said Charlottetown. And I remember at the, at that conference, uh, the city of Charlottetown and the city of Summerside, they both had their, their town agencies or city agencies there promoting, um, you know, the two cities. So I'm wondering if you guys are planning on doing anything like that or if you've thought about it because it might be a really good opportunity.
So, um, what I can say is that when those major conferences happen and, um, we are bidding, uh, after conferences up until 2029 right now, we actually have bids. But typically when you are awarded the bid or you're invited to come and promote, that's the opportunity. So I suspect Charlottetown may be in the cycle to host that event. So they would have been invited to be able to present, uh, and get people excited about coming to their, uh, future conference. But I will say that that's exactly the, the work that we do, that there's a couple of conferences that we've, we're attending. In fact, we were attending this summer, the Canada Games for 2029 because that is in our line of sight to be hosting that. And you get a lot of, uh, uh, lessons learned, but also there's a real opportunity when you're close to it to actually do the pre-promotion. I know, Gillian, you've got a conference that you're going to in November that is a really massive conference for us in 2023.
Yeah, and, and that conference is P C M A C I C, and I, I don't ask me what the abbreviation is right now because I won't remember. Meeting planners. What it is though, it's a, if you, if you are familiar with the meetings and convention sales, um, funnel, there is a whole career that I didn't know about till I worked in hospitality of meeting planners. So they are looking for the next destination for an association, meeting, convention, incentive. Um, so we have, uh, two people on our sales team that actually are, one was in particular is focused on that space. We won for this region a couple of years ago, a massive conference of meeting planners. So in November of 2023, we will have 150 delegates in our region who then will go back and have had an amazing time within the region because we know we'll show them a great time. So it's a massive familiarization tour for 150 meeting planners. So that's a significant win for our region and we're quite excited about it. So myself and Shawna Dickey Garnum, who is our meetings and convention salesperson, will attend that event in Niagara Falls here in 2022 and understand better how we really can make that event, uh, you know, a huge success for everybody in the region.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? I believe that is it. Is there any motion on that? No? Okay. Well, thank you very much for your presentation this evening. Certainly informative. Uh, Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Yes, I would move the, um, Ms. Hicks and Ms. McKinnon be thanked for their presentation, updating council on a vision St. John's place brand element. A distinctive, authentic, and memorable, inspiring, and empowering representation of the greater St. John region.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Counselor Donovan on the question. Please vote now. Thanks very much. Have a nice evening. Under Presentations, Item 5C, Kingsway Life Care Alliance Healthy Aging and Living Initiative. In attendance, Tammy Alaby, RN, B S C N, CEO, and Vicky McGee, Director of Finance. And it's a proposed point 25 kilometer walking path, gazebo, and outside exercise. Excuse myself.
My name is Tammy Alaby. I'm the CEO for the Kingsway Life Care Alliance. Um, the alliance is an umbrella organization that oversees several, um, nursing homes. Um, tonight we're here to talk about Kingsway Care Center, which is located in Quispam sis. So I'd like to thank Mayor O'Hara and the council for providing us some time this evening and to talk to you about our home and a dream that we see for our property. Um, I can change the slide, I guess. Kingsway Care Center is a level three long-term care community, uh, on a multi-acre property off Squire Drive near the Gondola Point arterial. Um, we actually overlooked the new traffic circle, which we thoroughly enjoy. Uh, the property tax for 2022 was over a quarter of a million dollars. Can change the slide. Since opening in 2008, we've cared for over 390 residents and their families. The majority of our residents are either from Quispam sis or they choose our home because our families live close by. We currently have 74 people who live with us and we have one, um, respite or relief care room to total 75. We always have 100% occupancy and actually, unfortunately, a waitlist of over about a year long. Of our current residents, 38% of their powers of attorney or their substitute decision-makers are from Quispam sis. And when we consider their extended family, the percentage of the Quispam sis families is far greater. Uh, next slide. The people that we care for have a wide range of care needs. With it being a, a level three facility, as I mentioned, um, the folks that live with us require 24-hour care. We do have a memory care unit, our neighborhood, um, that is home to people with varying types of dementia in all different, um, stages as well. Um, and we care for people living with many different diseases and conditions, um, some of which would be multiple sclerosis, um, stroke survivors, and varying levels of physical The average age, uh, of our residents, 84 years old, and we currently have five residents who are over 100, and one is soon to turn 103. Um, so this certainly increases our age significantly, or our average significantly. We certainly have, um, younger folks as well. Uh, next slide, please. So I mentioned a relief or a respite room. Um, this is a room that provides a break, um, or, um, an opportunity for folks who are caring for loved ones at home, um, to have some time to tend to themselves and their own needs. So whether it's appointments, um, vacation, visiting, uh, whatever that is that they need. Um, this room, there's only two in the area, and so it, it books about a year to, to two years in advance. Um, people can use it up to one week minimum to a maximum of one month. Um, and according to social development rules, um, and regulations, they can use it, uh, twice a year, uh, six months apart. The majority of people who utilize this, um, room are from Quispam sis and they return year after year. Next slide, please. Um, so when talking about the folks, um, at Kingsway, we have to think about our staff and we have, um, on average about 150 staff members and 50% of our staff live in Quispam sis. Next slide. Um, community programs. So certainly one of, um, our key initiatives and something that's very important to us is, um, is our community and staying connected. Um, so prior to COVID-19, um, we had a number of great community-based projects and, um, hoping this fall, um, that if it's safe, that we'll continue or pick those back up. So one of them is, um, called an Adult Day Program, and this provided a day, um, of relief for caregivers from Quispam sis and beyond. Um, similar to our respite room, um, it's more where people will just come in for the day or half of a day. In March, just prior to us closing it down, um, the program is operating four days a week with seven to eight participants each day. Another community-based program that we plan to restart is our Backpack Program. Um, this program was, um, one where we connected with our elementary schools. Um, we had one school here in the valley and then, um, our home in Milleville connected with a school in there. But our residents packed backpacks of nutritious food for children who, um, struggle with food security and on the weekends would go home and not have a whole lot, um, of nutrition. So the backpacks provided that for them. Uh, next slide, please. Um, we also ran a, a very popular day camp for kids in the summer, um, where the kids would, would come for the week and they'd be introduced to long-term care and it taught them, um, how to be good volunteers. Um, so it, uh, had many different benefits for the, for the children, um, as well as our, our residents who live there to connect with the kids. Um, we try to make, uh, as many intergenerational collaborations, um, as we can, and that's certainly a priority with our local schools and daycares. Um, and we were, we have been able to do some virtually, um, since COVID hit, but certainly hoping that, um, getting back in the classroom and bringing them in, into the homes would start up again. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so sharing a little bit about us, um, and what we're all about, kind of brings us to why we're here tonight, um, presenting to you. We have a dream that Kingsway will be a destination, uh, or a community hub for people living in Quispam sis. Um, and like I said, it's always been important for us to have our home and our residents to continue being members of the community, even though they're living in a long-term care home. Connecting in many different ways with the community has always been vital. Currently, we see people using our driveway as a walking loop with their strollers or just, um, with their friend or themselves, with their, um, with their pets. And we have just sort of felt that this is a, an opportunity to extend on that. Uh, we also have the playground at our entrance, um, that is always busy with families. Um, and again, this is just another opportunity to kind of extend that playground down onto our property. Um, this will provide an opportunity for us to reduce the stigma that surrounds long-term care and will show that nursing homes can be fun and vibrant places to live, to visit, um, and to just be around. Next slide, please. Um, so some of the aging trends is certainly that people are living longer, people are staying home longer with some of the services that are in place. Um, by the time that they move into our homes, they're coming with more complex health needs, um, and it will provide a space to help people age well and, um, with some health in mind. Next slide. So this is a photo, um, that currently if you came to visit us, it's just a nice grassy field with a few trees on there. Um, but we want to make use of that field. Um, this is directly in front of our home and our residents who live on our, um, second level sit and they look, they look out over this property and, um, currently they, they may see somebody playing with a kite or, or a frisbee or, um, a dog, you know, playing catch, but, uh, other than that, they'll see the traffic going by, hitting the, the traffic circle. Uh, we have a goal of putting, um, a gazebo on the land that can be used by both Kingsway resident staff and their families, but also we see people from the community coming and using it. Uh, we envision music gatherings, um, possible markets taking place in and around the gazebo. Surrounding the gazebo would be a point two-five kilometer wheelchair and walker accessible walking path that would come down from the playground. Uh, we chose the point two-five so that if people were wanting to mark out how much they were walking, it would be easy to, to know, uh, four laps would be their one kilometer. Um, and also we felt it important along the path to put some of the outdoor exercise equipment, um, that they have now in places, um, if somebody wanted to, um, just be practicing a little bit more physical activity. We see the people from the community using this, this space, um, knowing that it is accessible, it's visible, um, and it's located right at the side of our facility, um, where we currently have an A E D machine and, uh, EpiPens as well. Um, next slide. Um, the cost of the project has fluctuated a little bit, um, with some of, uh, the cost changing a little bit, um, more rapidly since COVID has hit. Um, but the, these are, I think, our most recent, um, figures with, with some quotes that we've received, um, with some prep for the walkway, the actual paving of the walkway, the gazebo, and then the exercise equipment as well. And we see this project as one that would grow and certainly would have to be done in phases. Um, it's a project that would bring the community in, would allow our residents the opportunity to promote their own health, healthy living and a space to enjoy with their families. Health and wellness for Quispam sis residents is the ultimate goal and vision, and we would love to have the support and collaboration with the town of Quispam sis. Thank you so much for your time and your consideration. Try our best to answer some questions.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, could you repeat your name again?
Uh, Tammy Alaby.
Tammy Alaby. Thank you very much, Tammy. Um, the mayor has, um, declared a, a conflict, so I'll, I'll go around the room. If there's any questions, I'll start on my left with Counselor Donovan. If you have any comments or any questions.
Thank you. Um, it was a really good presentation and I really appreciate you taking the time to, uh, to come in and, and present to us. Um, normally, uh, I'm, I'm a little weary of, you know, considering, um, donations to, to private organizations. However, um, I see your case as just a little bit different. Um, you know, the residents of Kingsway, even though it is a, a nursing home, they're, they're just residents of our community. Um, and I know they're, they're really limited in being able to, uh, enjoy our, our beautiful town. I do think it would be lovely for, for, um, them to have the opportunity to, to be able to go out, um, and enjoy a walking path just like everybody else in the community. Uh, you know, QuizpamSis is known for its, um, for its walking, for its walking, uh, paths and, um, I, I really think this would be a great idea, so I would move that, um, Ms. Alaby be thanked for her presentation, um, on the Kingsway Life Care Alliance's Healthy Aging and Living Initiative acknowledging that the Kingsway Life Care Alliance, uh, have made an application to the town's community grant program, requesting a ten-thousand-dollar grant to assist in the development, um, of the accessible walkway, gazebo, and specialty outdoor exercise equipment, which will be considered as part of the twenty-twenty-three budget deliberation process. Thanks.
So it's been moved by Counselor Donovan. Do I have a second here? Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Olson on the question. Counselor Olson.
Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you for your presentation. It's, uh, good to see, uh, that, uh, there's, uh, an improvement being made there for the residents, uh, cause we're all, uh, we're all supportive of the residents, uh, in getting, expanding their available, available mobility in their home, in their home away from home. So do you have a, a schedule of when you'd like to do it? How long do you anticipate it, uh, taking to? Have you looked at any schedule for construction and completion and all that?
Um, yeah. I'm, uh, Vicki McGee. Yeah, so, uh, we see it as probably going to be a two-year project. By the time, like, the prepping the land and getting the, uh, get it all settled and all that probably started in the, in the spring, and then, um, probably a year later to do the paving and things like that to make it accessible to everyone. And if I could just add that it's not necessarily just for our residents, we're hoping that other, um, seniors in the area and, uh, could utilize the area at the same time, so.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. Any further, oh, yes, follow-up, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, uh, it's, uh, it's good to, uh, educate everybody on the amount of taxes that you pay and how long you've been there and the population that you, uh, service. Uh, I know that, uh, QuizpamSis was a proud supporter of the van that you bought and, big time, and that had some impact, you know, to have that type of information and just puts it all in perspective, you know, so, uh, thank you very much for all.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. Counselor Luck?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, thank you for the presentation, it was wonderful. I hold Kingsway near and dear to my heart. My daughter just returned with her master's in applied gerontology because she worked at your center and had fond, fond memories and experiences there, so I think it's a wonderful organization. Um, I think it's a, I mean, it's a wonderful, um, initiative, especially when, you know, you're trying to also include the community. I think that, you know, that's wonderful. I know that a few other residents have spoken to me about the outdoor exercise equipment, so I'm sure they'd be really excited to, to hear that it will be open to the public. So I just wanted to thank you for the presentation. I think anything we can do to do more intergenerational kind of community, um, you know, events and, and things is great. Um, the one question I do have is, um, it is going to be costing more than what we'll be looking at for funding, so what are your plans in terms of, like, will you be doing fundraising? Will this be, so I guess can you speak a little bit to how you're going to secure the other amounts that you'll be needing? Thank you.
Okay, so, um, I'm sorry, we, um, had kind of done some projections as to, uh, as far as our, uh, donations and things, and of course we'll be doing some of our own donations, but we're looking to approach, uh, maybe federal, like their MLAs and things like that, uh, our neighboring, uh, municipality too, with Rossay, cause we do have some of their residents. And, uh, we currently have, uh, about sixty-five, sixty-eight thousand dollars of our own money to contribute to it, so that, uh, with donations and, uh, hopefully some of our vendor support and, and that type of thing is where we're looking to raise the more funds to go towards it.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. Counselor Miller?
Thank you. Uh, thank you for your presentation. I'm all for this, I guess I just wanted to, uh, uh, make a note for, cause we've got some new council members as well from, from a few years ago, is that the playground that is there was on donated land, I believe, from, from, uh, from the center, so, um, it is a good partnership and, uh, I'll be supporting this full-heartedly, so thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. So we have a motion and, um, I'll call for the vote. I'll do a show of hands, please. It's gonna work. Can I vote? Oh, I may vote, okay. So the motion is carried. Thank you, Ms. Alaby, and thank you, Ms. McGee, for your presentation. It will be moving on to the budget process. Thank you.
There we go. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schreier. Moving on to public hearings, uh, I'm looking here and seeing that we have some people who are patiently waiting. I'm wondering if we could ask, uh, Council if we could move correspondence forward so that we don't make our good people wait all evening. Do we need a vote on that? Okay, uh, would, uh, Kirk, would you, uh, Counselor Miller, would you like to make a motion? Just moving, uh, item number nine.
I would like to move that we, um, um, go straight to correspondence and then go back to number seven afterwards.
Thank you very much. It's been moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Donovan on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, six-zero. So we're going to item number nine, correspondence, uh, Mr. Bill Mattson, gravel concerns for motorcyclists on Route one-nineteen, Monarch Drive intersection. Would you like to come forward, Mr. Mattson?
Evening, Your Worship and Counselors. I'm Bill Mattson.
Thank you for being here this evening, and, uh, would you like to explain to Council your purpose here, please?
Yes, uh, I did send, uh, a couple of pictures, if, I don't know if they are gonna come up or not. Okay, so, uh, if you're traveling on Route one-nineteen northbound from the, say, the highway, and you turn right onto Monarch Drive, that's the subdivision I live in, uh, you can see, uh, may I approach the, okay?
Sorry, if you're speaking, you'll have to come back to the mic.
Oh, okay, I'll just stay here then, thank you. So, uh, it, when you turn right onto Monarch Drive, uh, you can see there's a lot of gravel that's on the road there. All this is, there should be another picture of, uh, to the right. Yes, so, uh, all that gravel's coming from the area that's all gravelled there, and, um, what, the reason it's, the gravel's being pushed onto the road is because of, uh, ATVs, uh, vehicles turning there. So when you're operating a motorcycle and there's quite a few motorcycles in that subdivision, uh, traveling on that gravel, it's, it's like riding a motorcycle on ice and it's extremely dangerous. So, uh, what I was, uh, asking or proposing is if the town could, uh, do something about it, um, maybe, uh, I don't know who owns that gravel area, but maybe put up a curb or blocks, block, uh, part of it, so there's like a driveway in there. And that, that's what I'm proposing. I, I've called, uh, or, or asking, I should say, um, I have called over the past few years and the town has come up and swept the area, but, uh, if, as you can see, right, like, it, it's a continuing problem and it's not always instant, right? You know, the town has other things to do, so it's not always instant that the gravel swept up, so, uh, what I was asking is if, uh, something could be done about this safety concern.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson, and, uh, I, I have a couple of people here with some questions, and that stretch, of course, the highway does belong to the provincial government and that little plot of land, I believe, does also, so I'm going to go to Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship, thank you, Mr. Matheson. I know exactly the corner you're talking about and the gravel, and that is owned by the Department of Transportation. Um, I guess, um, I feel like we sort of missed our chance, uh, we just went through a major paving or the province did of, of that, uh, road, uh, so I guess it would be, um, number one, in my mind, is would the province consider paving it? That would be the ultimate goal. I, I, I would think that that would, um, take care of that, um, situation. Or number two, um, I don't think you could, uh, put any type of barrier, that's not gonna help, help, help the gap gravel. So I will direct my questions to the, um, Director of Engineering and he'll have the insight as to what we can do to best.
Uh, Your Worship, where the province has just finished the paving, I would imagine they still have some level of warranty with the contractor, so, uh, I think our first quarter of business would be to contact DTI to see if we can get them to have, uh, NRB come back and do a quick, um, a quick re-evaluation of that, that area. What they're experiencing, uh, is essentially the same thing that we come across on any corner in the town when you freshly pave and put new gravels down. Until everything's compacted, it's gonna, it's gonna do exactly what Mr. Mattson has said, it's gonna spall out under the, into the travel lane, so, um, we can, uh, we can reach back to DTI to see what they have in, in their deficiency, uh, process to see if we can get them back. Otherwise, any permanent measures, you know, paving, barriers, curbing, that would ultimately, as mentioned by Council already, is followed under the DTI responsibility, but we can start to see, we're so close to the completion of the contract, I'd imagine they've got a, like, a ninety-day or sixty-day warranty period that if we contact them, in due course, they could be, uh, addressing it hopefully very quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Lojji. There is a motion there. Uh, Deputy Mayor Schreier?
Uh, with that being said, I, I'll move that since the Gondola Point arterial, Route one-nineteen falls under the provincial jurisdiction, Mr. Matheson's correspondence be referred to the Province, uh, of New Brunswick Department of Transportation and Infrastructure for Investigation and Action, as there are policies and programs. I believe we should add, under the direction of the Director of Engineering.
They don't, they, they would, I think if we just, as a follow-up to their recent construction, they don't take any direction from me. If they would, I, there'd be a lot more stuff done, but, I wish they did. But, uh, a follow-up to their recent construction on the, on that arterial.
It's just, uh, Mr. Matheson's correspondence, that we are acting on his behalf to see that this would be done. Okay, thank you.
One comment that Mr. Lojji made about the, the gravel being spewed out onto the road before or while it was, uh, not being compacted, uh, this was a problem even before all this construction was, uh, done on Route one-nineteen, so.
Thank you. I have a motion on the table. I moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Counselor Olson on the question. Seeing there are none, please vote now. Motion carried, six-zero. Thank you very much for your time this evening and for your, I'll print for your, thank you. Item B, dangers in unsightly premises, one-oh-six, Parkside Drive, staff report from bylaw enforcement. Oh, I'm way ahead of myself here. Oh, there we go. Thank you. Correspondence, nine-B, traffic speed concerns on Melanie Drive, Rhonda Power in attendance. Rhonda, if you wouldn't mind coming forward. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Your Worship and Counselors. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for having me. My name is Rhonda Power. I live at Two Edwards Drive, and Two Edwards Drive is right on the corner of Melanie Drive off the Vincent Road. I did bring some, a PowerPoint? Okay, great, thank you very much. So my property is on the cor- corner of Melanie and Edwards, so my side yard faces Melanie, okay? So I'm bringing my concerns, uh, to you tonight because, um, in regards to the need I feel of, of a traffic study done on Melanie. Uh, people walk there all the time. It, as you can see in the picture, it is a long strip of road, okay? And there's always families out walking, there's no sidewalk there, so people do have to work, walk on the street, um, cycle, people cycling all the time, walking their dogs. And the picture that I have right here, as soon as you enter onto Melanie Drive from the Vincent Road, you can see that there is no, um, stated speed limit, the forty, I know residential's usually a forty, uh, miles per hour speed limit, but there is no, uh, sign there. I don't know what happened to it, it's gone, so, um, so right off the bat, somebody coming in, you know, they're just, they're just seeing the road ahead of them. So Melanie is one of the main entries and exit roadways, uh, to get onto the Vincent Road, um, for vehicles, and it's accessed continuously throughout the day, and, and there's a lot of peak times where it's more busy, and that's usually in the morning, uh, people going to work, but especially around, you know, four o'clock and after, after hours, after work and whatnot. There's a lot of cars that are really driving quickly on this street, is it, like, a high-speed, uh, cars and motorcycles. And it's a great concern, I've spoken to some residents on the street and they, they just shake their head and it's, it's, it's very frustrating and it's scary. Uh, so I have brought some pictures, so, okay, this one here, um, talking about the cuplex trails, beautiful cu- cuplex trails that go through my sub, our subdivision. So one section, as you can see right there where the gravel is, this would be part of the cuplex trail coming out onto Melanie Drive. So often there's children coming out on bicycles, you know what kids are like, sometimes they don't even look and they're zooming, and my greatest fear is the close calls of a car not stopping fast enough, okay? The next slide, please, if you don't mind? And this just shows on the other side of the road, um, where the other section of the, uh, the trail is, so it's, it's on either side of Melanie, so the people can be coming and going, bicycling, running, carriages, pushing their babies, whatnot, on, on there. That road, as you can see, it's, uh, it's a straightway and it runs about point-six-five of a kilometer, and it looks pretty inviting, there's no bumps, lumps, ditches, you know, dips that could even make somebody want to slow down so that they wouldn't hurt their car. So unfortunately, those who like to drive fast, they are just gunning it and there's nothing really to make them stop. And like I said, there is no sidewalks on that newly paved road, so we have to walk on the street. To, to, where are we at now? Oh, here, so the only spot, now here, I walk to the very top of Melanie Drive, um, and the road that comes off that is Rivercrest Drive, and there's some houses that are up there. That is the only spot where there's any posting, you can barely see it there, I forgive me for my photography, but that's where the, the only sign that's posted for, for the speed limit. So I know you can post a speed limit, you can hope for the best, but I'd also like to see it being enforced somehow, and if that's a presence of police, um, if it's, uh, some type of, um, uh, traffic signs or the, uh, the proper, uh, presence of, um, the, sorry, the, uh, what are they called? They're called like, uh, I thought I had it written down here, just totally dropped, left my brain. The ones that read how fast you're going, we've all seen them, we all hate them, but I can see why people have them, you know what I mean? So even something like that, um, I feel would be beneficial. So there's my proposal. So there's my proposal. I would really, really strongly hope that we could get some sort of a traffic study just so you could see the need for some kind of calming of the traffic on that street. More prominent presence of police, you know, few tickets might help slow them down. Some implementation of those traffic calming devices that everybody doesn't like. Flex states, that's what I was thinking of, speed bumps and the radar speed signs. I would just, I thought about it to myself. I've lived there for better part of 13 years and it never really occurred to me before how badly the speed was of the cars going by. And I thought, why haven't I ever thought of this before or noticed before? Well, I realize I work from home sometimes now because of COVID. I'm a teacher, an instructor, and sometimes we can teach from home. So I'm home now and I see it and I hear it. And they're revving up and they're just flying and it scares me. I just would hate to see somebody get hit or hurt and then we'd have to make a change. But I would like to be more proactive and do it before that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your presentation and for your concern for our community. I have been in contact with the police on this particular stretch and I will be, you know, talking with them again regarding this. And I know there's motion here for council to read this evening. So the other thing I'd like to say, and I'd like to say it publicly, is that so often on our streets, when there is speeding, it is our neighbors who are doing the speeding. And that's something that certainly if you see somebody speeding and you know the license plate or you can get the license plate, please call the police. We don't enforce the speed limits, but the police do. So it's really important to let them know when that is happening. So I will open it up to questions for council. If anyone has anything or if anyone would like to read the motion. Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, your worship. Actually, first of all, thank you very much for your presentation. Very well done and very articulate. And you basically hit every point that we had there. It just made me think of a question and my question's actually going to go to Dana Perten Dixon regarding recreation and potentially Director of Engineering as well. So it's the first time I notice because I've walked on those Cuplex Trails. Shouldn't there be a crosswalk when we go across the road? Or is that a, do we have a policy for that or at least a sign that says a trail? That's just kind of a question.
Would somebody like to take that question, Ms. Perten Dixon?
Well, I could speak to signage, not crosswalks, but we would have trails. I don't know about the exact location, but I know that we have stop signs on the trail before we cross a road.
Oh, so no stops, I know, just a crosswalk.
Well, I would have to defer to the Director of Engineering Works with regard to crosswalks. I know that we've worked with Director of Engineering and his team to install rapid flash beacons at certain points along high-traffic areas. So, but again, I know that he's spoken about, you know, the cost of those and how many they're in our budget. And I believe we've had this request earlier and just at our last meeting for another one. And I know we have an upcoming budget meeting, so I don't want to speak to that. But we do work with the Department of Engineering on certain areas. But again, I don't want to speak for him, but we do have trail stop signs when you come to a street on the trail at various locations. And I can't speak to whether or not they are still remaining in that location, but we do have them throughout the trail network.
Thank you, Ms. Perten Dixon. Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, your worship. I actually had a very similar, I think Counselor Miller stole my idea. But first I wanted to thank Ms. Power for bringing this to our attention. It is something that it seems like it's a common occurrence that we're hearing almost every council meeting. So to reiterate the mayor's comments, you know, again, hopefully, you know, I kind of feel like we're putting our finger in the dam and it just seems like it's a bigger issue. And I'm not sure at conferences, when our town staff go away, if there's other things we can do as a community. Because it seems like every meeting, every time we talk to someone, speeding is, I think, the number one issue we hear. And it's happening amongst our neighbors. So I'm hoping that we can find a solution, you know, to kind of address it as a whole. With that said, I guess I'm going to direct my question to the Director of Community Services, I guess to build on Counselor Miller's point. It's interesting because I actually had the same kind of epiphany when I watched, like I use the trails, but I'm kind of going across them. I've never actually looked at them, kind of that, the view of your picture. And I'm just wondering if it is possible, because I know you're saying that we have the small stop signs at the end of the trail, but I guess I have the vision of a kid, they don't care that there's a little mini stop sign at the end of the trail, like darting out because they're going to the next part of the trail. And I'm just wondering for safety, would it be something that we could look at in terms of painting some type of, you know, so that people know that there's kind of two trails connecting? You know, again, it hasn't happened yet, but you know, based on that picture, I can totally see it happening where kids are darting out or, you know, hopefully adults would notice there was a stop sign. But, you know, I could see that happening as well, just, you know, you're running on the trail and you're caught up talking and you know that the trail continues and, you know, you kind of dart out into the street. So anyway, I guess I'm wondering if that is something that would be extremely cost prohibitive or is it something that we have considered in the past just to make sure that the drivers are aware that there's kind of two trails on each side that connect? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. So you're looking at a stop sign in the middle of the trail or something that says stop first, stop, look and listen?
To connect, so then that way, like if you have the street here and you have a trail here and a trail here, having paint on the street so that a driver would go, oh, there's, like, there's, it's almost like a crosswalk, basically. But, you know, I mean, not a traditional crosswalk per se, because, you know, it's to connect the trail versus to cross the street per se.
Okay. And I know that there are certain restrictions on roads as far as what we can paint on them and so forth. And it would be the Director of Engineering Works that would be able to answer any of those. So, Mr. Loche.
Thank you. When it comes to trail crossings, so far what the town has done is as we work with community services and develop the trail network, what we ask of them is what is the loading on that trail, the pedestrian loads? So there's a certain standard that as more pedestrians come across, there's a higher level of signage that's required to go through that. And what we're doing is through our transportation master plan and our active transportation plan, we're developing a set standard for the town. So it's relatively new for the community to get, you know, we've just recently got into the annual trail building business. And as you recall, we've put in those rapid flash beacons as we come across areas where there's a high intersection of pedestrians using the trail and vehicles. So Melanie Drive is at the further end of the trail, so we haven't hit the pedestrian volumes yet that essentially warrant the same type of attention, say, as a trail closer to the Cuplex, for example, where there's a higher level of pedestrians. And that having been said, our goal is ultimately to have all of the trail crossings developed to some set standard. So we are working towards that now with our master plans that we're putting together. With Melanie Drive, and we've done counts before it was paved and unfortunately, that's a downside of paving streets. We've got evidence that after it was paved a couple of years ago, the speeds went up substantially. You'd love to think that potholes and cracks were some type of a traffic calming measure, but you really have to look at the street infrastructure and pave it. So when we went through there and paved it, we saw an increase in about five kilometers an hour in the 85th percentile speed. So that means that people are going from 50 to 55 kilometers an hour on a place that's posted as 40. So it's those types of things that we have to take into account when we do the trail connections. We look at the posted speed limits, the level of volumes of pedestrians, and then we develop a standard to that. So the plan is, and not necessarily in the cat out of the bay, but with our transportation master plan, we're looking at that set standard. Talking about advanced signage, so the thing to recognize is, to your point, your worship, signs on streets have to follow a certain standard to be enforceable. So if we're looking at an advisory sign, crosswalk ahead or trail crossing ahead, we can develop those types of advisory signs. But what we want to do is make sure that it's consistent across the town. So if they see, a motor sees a trail crossing, a sign ahead or a rapid flash beacon, they know that, okay, throughout the town, that's the standard that's being used. So that's ultimately our goal is to have that type of thing throughout the town and ultimately adopt that. In our budget, we've tripled our request and I'm sure the treasurer will like me giving her a hint, notice, but I've tripled my traffic calming budget request for the coming year to include additional rapid flash beacons, additional temporary traffic calming devices such as the mid-block crossing signs and the traffic humps. So we'll see a little bit more aggressive application of those temporary measures. But when it comes to actual traffic calming, permanent measures really will follow our policy program that we have that requires a petition of the residents, a recognition that permanent measures are going to impact not just, you know, people that are making the concerns of the town, but the residents as a whole. And then they have to look at what type of street is it? Unfortunately, Melanie is considered a collector, a minor collector of that whole subdivision. You go in around that 14, 16 area, you're up 1,200, 1,400 vehicles a day. You go up to number 28 or 30 and you're into 800 vehicles a day. You go up to number 40, 44, you're into less than 200 vehicles a day, average traffic. So you can see how that funnels out to that whole area. So the biggest infractions that we've measured to date have been in that range from the 20s to the intersection with the Vincent Road. That seems to be the highest level of speed infractions that we've measured to date. So it is being monitored. It is an area that, working with the community services, that we want to pay attention to for the crossings. And then once we complete our final reports, we would then give it to the police department because ultimately it's enforcement. They're the people that have to be there, the traffic officers, to say if they're going to ding somebody with a fine or not. And to Mr. Power's point about the long, straight stretch, that also means that the people can see the police officer sitting down at the entrance of the subdivision, so they've got to balance how they do this. So it is a situation that we are experiencing, to Counselor Luck's point, throughout the town. And we are looking at all avenues. And what we're doing now, and I just came back from public birth conference, and everything that we're doing now is what is being done in most communities. A combination of the mid-block crossings, the rapid flash beacons, the advanced signings. So all the stuff that we're implementing and increasing our budget to address in the coming years, so, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Loche. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, Ms. Powers, for your presentation. Very well done. And I'd be remiss if I didn't comment on this because I think every meeting, almost it seems that way we have a traffic concern. And I always state, you know, the amount of money that we spend on traffic calming and, you know, that money could be taken and put somewhere else within our playgrounds, but people just won't slow down. So, and it just doesn't seem that the traffic calming might slow them down for a little bit, but then they can pick up speed. And I hear your pain because I live on a long stretch as well. That, you know, sometimes I think, how fast are they going? I wish I had a radar that I could see how fast they were going. I guess my point, your worship, would be that I know that we've been giving information to the police and asking them to do more. I would really like to see our police department, KV police, to do education on speeding. I think it's time that we do something to say that the police step forward and the town step forward. And I'm sure it's the same problem in Rossay. I don't think that they're immune to not having these issues. That there actually be a public education program on speeding because it's got to stop. And we've got to do whatever we can within our power to slow people down. Traffic calming, yep, thousands and thousands of dollars. We all know what budgets are like today. But I can't imagine that an education program can be too expensive that we can stand up, have the mayor stand up, the police stand up, councilors stand up, residents stand up that say, please slow down. Please slow down in our communities. Please take other people's lives into consideration. We're just back to school, you know, big promotion right now. Look at the buses, slow down, slow down. But it'll just go away. And people will, they get off the bus and then they'll be speeding, picking their children up. We know it's not, it's not an easy fish to fry. So I would like to put a motion forward that we, as a town, go forward to write a letter to our police asking them to give us, to partner with us on a public education on the dangers of speeding within our communities. I'd make that a motion, your worship.
Okay, I'm going to give the clerk a moment to, a few seconds to get that written up. Would you like to repeat that?
I would like to move that the town of Quispansis requests the KV police department to partner with us on a education program campaign to reduce the speeding in the town of Quispansis.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schreier. Did you get that, Ms. Snow? It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Counselor Luck. Counselor Luck, are you seconding that? On the question. Counselor Olson.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you for your presentation. Instead of just, with all due respect, I think the motion should cover the community that the KV police cover, you know, which would include Rossay and other parts of the area.
Deputy Mayor, are you okay with that? Counselor Luck, are you okay with that? To put in the area that is covered by, I don't know that we can speak for Rossay, but we can certainly ask the police. Again, yeah.
Council has been, has taken some deliberate steps to deal with all the traffic concerns that the deputy mayor has referred to over the years and we get them regularly. And we refer them to the police. Well, the police were authorized to hire four new policemen. So, you know, how they integrate that into the community, that's their challenges that they'll be facing. But we recognize that and I think it's a step in the right direction.
We appreciate the motion to create more education and, you know, the topic of speeding and people slowing down. This community is, when I think of Quispansis, I think of active, fresh air, people that love to do things, to be with their family, friends, you know, that type of thing. And it's important for it to be a safe environment for them to do that. And I think that's wonderful because, yes, I'm speaking about Melanie Drive, but I know Gondola Boulevard's got a whole other nightmare on their plate and so does Destiny Drive and so does Sherwood Drive. So it's not just Melanie, it's all around. So I really, really appreciate the motion for the education. I think maybe getting it in a higher, larger level might do something, you know? Definitely would love to have a police car sit in my driveway. He can sit in my garage and hide if he wants, just to nab a few. But no, I'd just like to say thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Counselor Donovan, please.
Thank you. And I do, I do agree with the deputy mayor's motion. I think it's a good one. The question I have, and I don't know who it would go to, maybe the acting CIO, but it seems like every meeting, we obviously have these, the traffic concerns. And every meeting, we make the same motion of, you know, referring to the police and, you know, seeking input, things like that. Are those, are the police reports, every time we refer to police for them to, you know, increase their monitoring of that area, are they public? Does somebody in this council get them? Because like I'd really be interested in seeing, you know, some of the reports after we, you know, or the mayor or whoever sends off a message to them saying, you know, we need to, you know, up the patrols in this area. Like I, I'm not accusing any, like any of the police of not going out there once we say it, but I just don't have any, you know, any facts that after we send them a message to go out and do more patrols, that they actually do it. You know, we were supposed to, I believe, hire two or three more officers and I think one or two of them were supposed to be for traffic patrol. So I don't know in the budget if they're going to, you know, maybe give us an explanation of what they've been doing throughout the year as far as traffic. But yeah, just like the traffic reports is what I'd be interested in seeing. So I don't know if that's public or not, but maybe you can help me out.
Thank you, your worship. As council is aware, it's
Thank you, your worship. As, as council is aware, it's, uh, an interesting dynamic here in that the police department does not report directly to council. And it, uh, answers to the board. Um, the mayor and Counselor Luck are currently members of the Police Commission, so. Um, they have oversight over the police. Um, it's interesting with. So much discussion at this council table over the last year or so in regards to speeding. Um, and then we've seen recently through the month of August that the police have really. Uh, had their hands full with impaired driving and, you know, over five hundred percent increase from the same time last month, uh, last year. In August, so i- it's just crazy with what's happening on our streets, uh, in Quispan Sis and in Rossay, so. Certainly the information from the Police Commission meetings, uh, is public information and we'd be happy to, uh. Let the police department know that we'd like to see that forwarded through to us. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, and, uh. I know that we will be hearing from the chief, probably at our next meeting, so I'm sure that we'll have lots of questions. For Chief Gordo at that time. Counselor Luck, please.
Uh, thank you, your worship. I just have a few other comments. Um, one, just to address, um, Counselor Donovan's concern. I mean, as, uh. Um, the acting CIO, Mr. Kennedy, has mentioned that the mayor and myself sit on, um, the, uh, Police Commission. And I can, and I'm sure, uh, the mayor can attest, every meeting we talk about speeding. So it is, uh, something that they are aware of. Um, but again, there are, you know, priorities and they are, the traffic people, I mean, they've been doing a great job. Publicizing the number of impaired drivers that they're catching. Um, so again, perhaps, you know, part of this kind of, um, motion in terms of educating on speeding can also be perhaps. Um, you know, and again, I'm sure that they're, you know, um, have the expertise to kind of look at how do they promote. Not just why we should maybe slow down, but also what they're doing. And promote how many people they gave tickets to, so it would go, oh, they're out there giving tickets, so that might be something. And then I think, I know that we wanna change the motion to include Rossay. But in terms as a town and using our own social media, that gives us another opportunity. So if the police are doing some things with public education. I'd like to also see our town kind of take that on to even share. We don't have to create it, but once they've decided what they're doing for us to. Try and get that message out to increase the reach, so people from, you know, no matter what they're looking at, is seeing that message. Um, so anyway, I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, worship. Uh, just to follow up, just so you know, there's gonna be another motion after this, but I also just wanted to let you know that. Many people aren't aware, as part of this year's budget, we actually added three officers, and particularly because of traffic calming issues, so. Uh, I do know down Queensberry, cuz I'm on that, that Facebook page, cuz I live up around there. I know in the last few weeks. The police have made a few stops cuz people are taking pictures and posting on the books, so. Um, they are doing their job on top, but we, we do have extra people, but there'll be one more motion after this as well, so stay tuned. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried six zero. Further to the question, there is another motion on the table. Counselor Luck.
Um, I move that council accept staff's recommendation to refer the traffic speed on Melanie Drive to engineering staff. For an updated speed monitoring, review for posted speed limits and to refer, um, to the KV police. Further information and enforcement and seek input from them as to any complaints they have received.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Luck, seconded by Counselor Donovan. On the question. Please vote now. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much, Ms. Power, for your presentation this evening. Okay, we will go back now to, uh, minutes of the previous meeting, item number seven. Have a good evening. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
I would move that the minutes be approved as prepared.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Counselor Donovan. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried six zero. Moving on to item number eight, unfinished business, ratification of tender number. Twenty twenty-two TQ zero six dash twenty, utility department, new four by four crew cab, half ton. Counselor Donovan.
Uh, I would move that council ratify the email poll conducted on August seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, to proceed with the direct purchase of a new twenty twenty-two four by four crew cab from Dobson Chrysler Dodge. Um, for the bid price of fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars, exclusive of HST licensing and tire levy. Um, additional costs for the truck purchase will be assigned from any twenty twenty-two surplus. If they are realized or as a real, reallocation, reallocation, um, of capital reserves.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Olson. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried six zero. Item number B, dangers and unsightly premises, one oh six Parkside Drive, staff report from bylaw enforcement. Rebuilding demolition, RFP. Counselor Bigger.
Thank you, your worship. I am, uh, relieved, very relieved and very appreciative of the hard work of staff, uh. To mo- to move that we award RFP number two thou- two zero two two TQ. Zero eight dash two two to Atlantic Precast Concrete Limited. For the stated price of seven thousand, five hundred dollars plus, plus HST. And that staff proceed with engaging the contractor to have the property. At one oh six Parkside Road remediated under the town's dangerous and uns- unsightly bylaw, number thirty-nine.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. It's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by. Counselor Miller. On the question, please vote now. Oh, on the question, sorry. Counselor Donovan.
Thank you. Um, this is just a question to, um, Mr. Loche, Director of Engineering. So just to confirm, um, that this is just a, like a yard cleanup, we're not actually tearing down somebody's house, are we? Because I, if I remember correctly, there was somebody living in that, that house. Thanks.
This, in the grounds. That, that's correct, your worship. This is strictly for the accessory building and the grounds around it. There is somebody living in the dwelling.
Thank you, Mr. Loche. Item number C, oh, on the question, sorry.
Um, thank you, your worship. I just have a, a question for, um, Director of Engineering. So just that I'm clear on the process. So, once this is issued, um, that gives the town the right to go on the property. And do the, um, cleanup? And are the homeowners, will they know ahead of time that you're coming? What will the process really unfold?
Your worship, what we've done is we followed the provisions of our bylaw and the municipalities act. In that we've, we've, we've provided written notice, we've provided notice by registered mail, we've posted the property on two occasions. Um, we've communicated directly with a caregiver of the tenants of the property, not necessarily the owners. So, so we've met our obligations under the act to be able to enter the property to clean up those premises. So we've met those obligations and that's, that's the process that we follow. So there, unless we show up on site and the owner happens to be there or is there and, and comes. With them, then there is a provision for some compassion, some appeal, but we'll. We're not going to delay it if, if for any unnecessary reasons. If he just says, I don't, I never knew. Unfortunately, the, the act has indicated that we've given them enough notice that they should have known.
Thank you, Mr. Loche. On the question, so it's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor Miller. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried six zero, item C, eight C. Dangers and unsightly premises, ten Tulip Court, staff report from bylaw enforcement, rebuilding demolition, RFP. Looking for a motion, please. Counselor Bigger.
Make it a twofer. Uh, thank you, your worship. I move that, uh, we award RFP number two zero two two. TQ zero eight dash twenty-three to Atlantic Precast Concrete, Concrete Limited for the stated price. Of twenty thousand dollars plus HST. And that staff proceed with engaging the contractor to have the property at ten Tulip Court remediated. Under the town's dangerous and unsightly bylaw, number thirty-nine.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. It's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor Miller. On the question. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Um, thank you, your worship. On the question, uh, could you just clarify if, if this property is vacant?
Through your worship, yes, this is a vacant property. Um, the issue with this particular property is that there, it's an estate. And the, uh, the process that we've had to follow is, is to have our solicitor ensure that. Our notices would be considered sufficient if there are errors and signs to that estate. And, uh, the, the report back from our solicitor was that the, the process that we had followed is sufficient. Again, um, where this is a full dwelling and it may be, um. It may be viable to rehabilitate it or secure it. Um, this is one that we will use a little bit more, uh. Discretion when it comes to demolition, uh, but as it sits now, the motion of council will give us the authority to act on that. As we see fit in the near future, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Loche. It's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor Luck. On the question, please vote now. Oh, uh, Counselor Bigger.
Thank you, your worship. Just to the, uh, through you to the Director of Engineering and Works, was there not some urgency added to this one in particular? Because of the, uh, you know, appearance of kids hanging out there a lot as well, students going. Around on that property and loitering and so on. I, I, maybe I'm wrong about that, but I just can't remember. Thank you.
Your worship, yes, that's correct. This is the one, this brought this to a little closer, higher priority for us in the assessments because it was. Uh, some evidence of trespass by, by youth in that area and that's why it came to a little bit of higher profile. Um, that having been said, uh, again, uh, where it is a viable dwelling, we'll be a little bit more judicious in how we apply that, uh, for us. We see compliance, if the building had been secured, um, and we wouldn't be dealing with this, we may not be at the stage, but. The estate or their owners or their signs have ignored or chosen to ignore all our postings and our correspondence, so. We have to take this action, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Loche. On the question. Don't see any? Please vote now. Motion carried six zero, item eight D, Hamel Drive Development Limited, application to amend CPA development agreement. Counselor Donovan.
Thank you. Um, whereas, I would move that whereas Hamel Drive Development's LTD. Is the owner of the lands, lands located adjacent to Route one nineteen. In the municipality being the town of Quispan Sis, which lands are more particularly described as having PID zero zeros. One seven, three seven, three two, here and after called the lands. And whereas the owner intends to use the lands for the location of a mixed density residential development. The development, the development. Um, and whereas the town has taken steps to amended zoning bylaw to rezone the lands to an integrated development zone ID. To permit the development of, on the lands. And whereas the owner's predecessor in the title to the lands entered into a development agreement. With the town, uh, with respect to the development, which agreement was registered October nineteenth, twenty thirteen as document number three three. Two two four seven zero one. And whereas the said agreement has been amended on two occasions and the owner is now requesting a further amendment. Now therefore be it resolved, council approve Ha- Hamel Drive Development Limited's application to permit a further amendment. To the development agreement pursuant to their application dated, um, May twelfth, twenty twenty-two, to revise the development's phasing timelines. And total number of units to one hundred and twenty-four. And fur- and further, the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign a consolidated. Community Planning Act agreement that consolidates and clarifies all amendments to date concerning this property.
Been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Olson. On the question. Counselor Olson, do you have a question on that? Please vote now. Motion carried six zero, zero. Property adjacent to Route one nineteen Swanton Drive and Milliken Drive, PID number one seven three seven three two, Andrew Harrigan. And Bradley Lockhart component, uh, proponents. Uh, item E. Remaining council items referred to strategic plan discussions. Council communication, need for better communication on decision-making and the rationale behind the decisions. Initially brought forward by Counselor Luck as one of her two municipal election campaign issues. MDB insight, based on their decision tree analysis, set this item as a high priority item. And Counselor Luck, please.
Uh, thank you, your worship. I just wanted to comment a little bit on it, just cuz the proposed motion, I don't think. Captures, I guess, the intent of what I brought forward originally. Um, I know I brought, um, forward other concerns around council communication, but really this was around communication with the residents. You know, more so kind of a marketing, like to bas- basically make sure that. You know, people that are living in the community have a better understanding of decision-making and rationale versus internal. Um, so I, anyway, I guess I'm, I, I, I guess my vision is, and it's part of our strategic plan. Is we've identified communication as an important component and I would love to see. Um, as partner with some, someone like Envision Saint John to actually have. More of a, you know, to, to build in and it kind of is captured in the motion, but when we're doing a business plan to capture in. Somewhat of a, like, almost a marketing plan, so we look at how we communicate. Uh, you know, we have three Facebook pages, maybe we could have one so that everyone is directed to like. You know, that's where they know they can go to get the information or kind of revive some of our other social media pages and. And look at those kinds of things to really, um, you know, engage the community, cuz engagement was another thing we identified as our strap, in our strap plan. Um, so anyway, I'm just, I'm, I'm happy to make the motion, but I don't really feel like the motion that was proposed kind of captures. The intent, um, because it talks about council communication versus really just communication and kind of marketing in general.
I'm going to go to Mr. Kennedy to respond, please. Acting CIO.
Thank you, your worship, and communication has been an ongoing challenge, I think, for many years when I. Think back to when I first started with the town, eight or nine years ago, we used to have a quarterly newsletter that we sent to every home. In Quispan Sis. We had the sense that people weren't really reading it and it was going, I'm not even sure if we had blue bins at that point, it was going right into the garbage, so. We actually decided to take a somewhat provocative approach. And on the front page of the next newsletter that we sent out, we basically said, are you reading this? And if you are, please let us know. Um, so there were probably six thousand, um, households in Quispan Sis at the time. And we said, please call us, please email us, because otherwise we're gonna get the sense that nobody's interested in this because nobody's reading it. And we got seven responses, one of which was from a resident of Rossay who lives, uh, near Donlin. Where the postal codes sort of inter, uh, are interchangeable, so. I said, well, thank you for the call and we appreciate that you're keeping up on Quispan Sis news, but you're not actually our target audience, so. We appreciate that, um, there are some challenges with communication. We appreciate that, um, there are some challenges with communication and certainly we've seen since the pandemic that we don't actually have. Traditional mainstream media in our council chamber. There's nobody here right now, although we know that they they keep an eye on the YouTube feed, so. Um, we are actively seeking uh, communications and engagement coordinator. Um, that position has basically been vacant. Um, since July of twenty twenty-one, when I assumed the Acting CAO role. So we we appreciate that there are some gaps there that we would certainly like to try to to fill. And it has been a challenge because the position that we're advertising for is only for six months. Um, we did hear from a prospective candidate late this afternoon, so. Um, maybe we'll be able to move forward with an interview with that person to see where things go, so. Um, I appreciate Councilor Luck's comments as well that the motion that was before council tonight is sort of a bit out of. Left field in terms of where we are with the strategic plan. Um, and obviously the strategic plan is a priority for council and that makes it a priority for staff as well and. Part of that would be engaging our residents and communicating with our residents and and having that discussion about the Facebook pages. Uh, when we first did that, an X number of years ago, shortly after the Qplex opened, we decided to go with a Qplex specific one because we knew that there were people. Uh, who don't live in our community that aren't that interested in Quispam sis local governance issues. But are certainly interested in what's happening at the Qplex. Um, so maybe it is time that we merge those things, um, and and draw people into one particular uh. Venue that makes it a little bit easier to to disseminate those messages. Um. We are looking to engage the services of a consultant to help us with the strategic plan and. Um, creating those departmental business plans and uh, corporate planning and as we move forward with our asset management and how we deliver our staff reports. To council, are we providing enough information as part of that council staff communication? Uh, are there other things that you'd like to see in a a staff report from? The treasurer, the director of community services, the director of engineering or works or myself? And just to try and make things uh, as open and transparent as we possibly can, and I think. Overall, we've done a very good job of that in Quispam sis over the last number of years. Um, things that perhaps in. Previous administrations were done. Behind closed doors and um, we've gotten away from that. That's just not acceptable to our residents. It's not acceptable to staff. It's not acceptable. To council as well, so I think we've done a very good job of that. Our full day budget session is a good example of that, that other municipalities don't do that. So even if people aren't actually physically sitting here, if they're interested, if they hear something that happened at council last night, last week. And they're certainly able to go to the YouTube page and and see that for themselves, so. Um, that's what we're looking for with that motion tonight is to allow us to engage the services of a consultant. Um, we did have money in the budget this year for a transition within our legal services department. Uh, our solicitor has agreed to stay on for an extra year as council is aware, so that money is. Is basically available, so we were hoping that we would get council's indulgence tonight and we'd be able to move that forward. Um, to engage the services of a consultant who can help us with those issues in terms of. Uh, moving forward with the strategic plan. And if we are fortunate enough to find someone that can uh, fill that communications and engagement coordinator role for the next six months. Uh, that will certainly help in that regard as well with the social media and other. Uh, communication components that we would like to have for our residents. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Uh, Councilor Miller, please.
Thank you, your worship, and uh, thank you to our Acting CAO as well for explanation. Um, I would also like to add that perhaps when we, uh, if this goes through, we do get a person. Is look at our town website as well. I find it not as intuitive as it probably could be. Um, so a lot of people go there looking for stuff and then I kind of have to tell them, okay, click here, click here, here's how you get to this one, so. Um, I think that may be something to look at because I know we did a major revamping many, many, many years ago. Uh, but now it's, I I think it may be time to look at it because we're trying to do Facebook, we're trying to do. So many different things is if we can have it all in one spot and. Easy, maybe easier to find, maybe it's just me at my age, but easier to find would be something too. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Miller. And and as the Acting CAO said, as Mr. Kennedy said, uh, we have been a little shy on in in that department and. As far as human resources are concerned, we have been, uh, in fact, I was speaking uh, just recently with Mr. Kennedy about that and. You know, we're hoping to fill that that void so that we can move forward with, uh, you know, certainly improvements. We can always improve. And uh, certainly there's nothing wrong with that. So we have. A, uh, okay, Councilor Luck, I think you were going to read the motion.
Yeah, I'm gonna try, so if there's something I'm missing, please amend. I'll I'll kind of based on what feedback we ever. We've received, so council, I I move that council for this matter to Acting CAO Kennedy. To proceed with RFP to engage a consultant to assist in the implementation of the Quispam sis community strategic plan. By establishing a corporate business plan and departmental business plan, including tying in a communications component. Such as Facebook and website and funding to come from budgeted funds that were initially allocated for the legal transition in twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Councilor Luck. It's been moved by Councilor Luck, seconded by Councilor Olson. On the question. Seeing there are none. Councilor Luck, did you want to repeat that for?
After component. Including uh, face. And social, I got it, yeah.
When you have that completed, um, Ms. Snow, would you mind reading the motion back?
Okay. Moved by Councilor Luck, seconded by Councilor Olson. Council refer this matter to the Acting CAO Kennedy. To proceed with an RFP to engage a consultant to assist in the implementation of the Quispam sis. Community strategic plan by establishing a corporate business plan and departmental business plans. Including tying in the communications component, including Facebook and social media and the town's website. And funding to come from the budgeted funds that were initially allocated for the legal transition in twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Ms. Snow. So it's been moved by Councilor Luck, seconded by Councilor Olson. On the question. Please vote now. Motion carries six zero. Item E two. Proposed scenic road designation, Gondola Point Road, Cedar Grove Drive and Model Farm Road. Initially brought forward by Deputy Mayor Schreier, MDB insight based on their decision tree analysis. Set this item as a medium priority. The Gondola Point Road scenic road designation study is currently underway. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Uh, thank you, your worship, and um, I recognize that this is a long-term. Um, initiative. It's not something that will happen overnight, so uh, step by step. Uh, so with that being said, I would respectfully move that, um, council refer Cedar Grove Drive. To the um, two thousand and twenty-three budget for consideration under the scenic road study. And further move to refer Model Farm Road to as information for future study.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schreier. Councilor Bigger, are you seconding that? It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Councilor Bigger. On the question. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Uh, thank you, your worship. I just wanted to expand on um, Cedar Grove Drive. As we know, that's home to Richie Lake and um, uh, it's very um. Important to us, um, the our lake, little Richie Richie Lake that Quispam sis is named after. And we've had um, presentations by um, uh, residents on the traffic flow in that area as well. And I've had people approach me not present, not presenting to council, but as a counselor with a major concerns on that road as well. So I I do believe that as a heritage site, um, that that is another reason why we would want to consider. Um, that designation for Cedar Grove Drive. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schreier. Councilor Bigger.
Thank you, your worship. I just would echo, uh, what the deputy mayor has just said. I was thinking about this, that, uh. Richie Lake, uh, is of course, uh, you know, sort of. Uh, it's very central to the history of our of our town. Um, the name of the town is really inspired by Richie Lake in many ways. Uh, and well, literally, and. Um, I also was thinking that we often have people come before us and express a lot of concern about our curating of that area. Um, we have uh, developments going in on the other side. And there's been ample concern expressed about, you know, uh, silt issues and so on, and so I'm in favor of doing this. From that perspective as well. I think it adds credibility to um, how seriously we take. You know, the ecology of that area and with the the need for proper sort of curation and preservation of the area. And uh, I also would just, uh, ask though, uh, it seems to me that Gondola Point Road. Um, has some natural sort of. Potential for stopping points and so on. It seems to have, I wouldn't say that there's loads of elbow room down there either, but. Uh, there's lots of little cottage houses right on the water next to each other. Uh, but um, with Cedar Grove, it's a little less apparent, and so I don't know if there's. If a study would include kind of trying to figure that out as well. I suppose it probably would. I just wanted to confirm if that's. Something that would be, uh, investigated is kind of how we could make it more of a destination, generally speaking, you know. Uh. Lastly, I would just, uh, note that. We recently had someone come in and uh, express concerns about people speeding on that road. And um, I would say that we want to keep a close eye on that as well as we consider development of making it a destination. Um, we have to bear in mind that there are people who live there who currently feel that there's already loads of people cutting through there, going far too fast. And so I'm sure we'll keep an eye on that as we consider all of this, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bigger. Uh, Mr. Lojé, please, Director of Engineering.
You you worship, um, uh, I guess I've, uh. This will be tasked to to my division to to look after, and I've got a couple of questions that perhaps I can get some direction from. From the deputy mayor, from members of council, um, on a couple of points. First off, to Councilor Bigger's point about. The traffic and the speeding, it's it it is, it would be counterintuitive to call this a destination, a scenic route. Or some type of a traveled area. Um, so so I'm I'm looking for a little bit of clarification because I can see us. Developing a plan to to use Councilor Bigger's point about a curated approach to Richie Lake and the environs, the surrounding area. Uh, but that would be at odds to creating a draw that would increase traffic to that area. Um, if council will recall, we've just recently been advised that. The water quality and protection of Richie Lake. May be eligible for an environmental trust fund grant that we will be making an application for in the coming months. So. I hesitate to 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 go to the scenic route. Designation when we're mainly, when when if the intent of council is to look at. How do we best showcase our crown jewel, so to speak? Without creating some undue traffic and things like that, it's so it's at it's at odds to what. A scenic route essentially should be. There are no um, public access points into the lake. It's all privately owned frontage. We only have the one. Area that we have access to at the beach. And even our trail that goes down from the lake. To the Hovey Road or towards the Hovey Road and then out onto the Quispam Road. The old Coach Road is on a surisment that we would require some partnership with from. The Legion Court, the industrial or the institutional properties that's there, so. I think there's, there there may be a little more involved than a scenic route study and I just want to make sure that I'm on the. Right page of in taking this approach, so it's mainly for clarification from for my purposes, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Lojé. I'm going to go to uh, Councilor Miller first and then we'll get clarification from the deputy mayor.
Thank you, your worship. Um, uh, I guess, uh, the Director of Engineering said I I don't get Cedar Grove as a scenic route. At all. Zero. I mean, I know that area very well. I grew up right there. There's, you've got the little marshland where it goes down by Stony Croft Lake Road a little bit out there. You've got some trees which are a walking trail and then you've got, uh, the beach. Um, to draw people into there, I don't think you got a scenic route. I think you you have a scenic route if you do Model Farm Road. I think you got a scenic route if you do Mean's Cove. Road and little stopping points, but I don't get Stony, I don't get the Cedar Ridge at all.
Thank you, Councilor Miller. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Uh, thank you, your worship, and thank you for all the comments. It's uh, it's um, interesting. It's. You know, you want to protect something for its heritage and what it means to the town. And um, by doing so that we might create more people coming to that spot. And how do we deal with that? Uh, so once you, um, you know, look at a see Richie Lake and say, okay. How can we protect it? How can we enhance the road that it's currently on because we know people are using it as a drive-through and. And there's speeding issues with that, so. We make Richie Lake what it should be and respect it for what it should be and that may increase the amount of traffic, so I guess we. We're two-pronged. How do we approach this? And I would be looking at the Director of Engineering to say. You know, with it being so crucial to our town, what can we do to make sure that the traffic flows? Because don't forget, we have the Pettingale Road that ha- is a major um, artery. That traffic, it can take some of the traffic. We also have people that are walking on the trails behind Richie Lake. Really enjoying the view of the lake. It's not always car traffic. There's foot traffic there as well. We know that coming up later that we're looking at an extension of one of the trails, so that will increase the foot traffic in that area as well. And of course, the foot traffic on the on the road. On um, the Pettingale Road is is quite significant, I think, in my mind. So I guess that that's the crux of the matter. If we, uh, you know, really look at Richie Lake as being a a um, culturally sensitive. Area for our town, it's going to increase more traffic, so um, I think we sort of have to. I agree with the Department of Engineering, the, um, Mr. Lojé, that how do we approach this and I'm open to ideas. If, um, because I think that we have to look at this area really carefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schreier. Councilor Donovan.
Thank you. Um, I do, I do see, um, the Gondola Point Road area as as a scenic, um, route. And um, like Councilor Miller had mentioned, I I see Model Farm as more of a scenic route. Um, destination maybe than than the uh, Cedar Cedar Grove, so maybe. Um, this is just suggestion, um, maybe we could, uh, because I believe in in the motion, it said that we were going to. Um, move Cedar Grove to twenty twenty-three, so maybe we could reverse those and do Model Farm in twenty twenty-three and then that would give us. Um, time to maybe discuss how we should move forward with the the Cedar Grove instead, because you know, Model Farm, it's. It's still a very good scenic route on its own, you know, it's got farmland out out towards that way and then it leads to. You know, one of our, one of our gems, which is, you know, Mean's Cove Road and the area, not Mean's Grove Road, but the. The uh, beach house and and um, things like that, so I. I that would be my suggestion, but I I didn't make the motion, so I'll let you guys decide. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Donovan. And I think Model Farm Road, you meant, yep, okay. Uh, Director of Engineering Works, Mr. Lojé.
Your worship, uh, what I would propose perhaps that where we have the Gondola Point Road under. Under review for scenic route and considerations. It may be prudent to see what type of a plan, what type of items are identified. In that report before we move forward with either the Model Farm or Cedar Ridge or Cedar Grove Drive or Mean's Cove Road, just to see. What is out there, what type of ideas are are created, um, instead of just saying we'll bu- bump it to twenty-three. Um, but I I do think that Cedar Grove Drive and the Richie Lake. We will still continue to make that application to environmental trust, and that may in itself lend. Uh, an approach to how we want to deal with those surrounding areas and protect that jewel and. And uh, because I know a lot of communities and as I mentioned, um, just coming back, it's it's amazing the things that you see at a conference that. They 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 bring them up and it's it's here, I was at a session where there was a community, they were developing. Uh, a a downtown area with a little lake significantly smaller than this, and they blocked it all off. So it ended up being walking trails and and gazebos and things like that because they wanted to draw. because they wanted to draw people there to enjoy it. And, and so I would imagine where you have limited public access, private property, we have trails, we want to protect that area. You would say, okay, we'll protect it by taking vehicles off. This is what they reasoned. Take vehicles off, you take them on assault off the roads, you take sand off the roads that infiltrate into this, this water course. The, the low, low profile, low demand, low impact is, is pedestrians. And they created a pedestrian access corridor. I would imagine, once we get a environmental analysis and assessment of Richie Lake and some of the concerns, that is, will lend us to say, okay, now we continue to protect that. The Q R trail that's on the, on the, on the one side, maybe that should be mirrored on the Hovey roadside or the, behind the Legion Court and, and develop it as a true pedestrian loop. And now you have a whole different level of scenic route. It's a pedestrian scenic route as opposed to vehicle scenic route. But I would suggest perhaps we wait and see what the current A T analysis of the Gondola Point Road does for us before we venture and decide, okay, let's do that to another street. Let's see what we get first.
Thank you, Mr. Lojé. And that, that was my thought as well on that, is that scenic route is, i- i- if it is the Gondola Point Road or the Model Farm Road, those are areas where we would travel and drive. Whereas the Richie Lake area would be a destination where you would actually stop and preferably on foot and be able to visit that, that lakeside waterfront. Councilor Luck.
Thank you, your worship. You know, I agree with the, the comments. Thank you to Mr. Lojé. I think what you're proposing is very reasonable because right now, you know, I know we want to kind of move forward. But, you know, I guess my preference would be to wait to see if we can get funding for an environmental, whatever it is, but to, to see, you know, because again, we want to protect it versus jumping. And I guess also to Councilor Miller's point, I think if I was going to pick a, a scenic route, looking at what Model Farm now has, which is the beach, the beach house, this amazing playground, the bike park, it leads up to this amazing new playground, Hammond River Park that's being renovated. Like, there's a lot of stuff. So again, if I was going to pick where we were going to kind of direct another scenic route, I would like to have lots of scenic things that, you know, we have infrastructure that people can stop and enjoy along the way. So I think Model Farm makes more sense. But I think for now, my preference would be to kind of just hold tight, see how Gondola Point goes, see how we make out with the environmental assessment, and see if we can get funding for an assessment and just, you know, to see how we can make that more user-friendly and still protect it, and then come to, back to this at a later date. But that's, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Luck. I'm going to go to Director of Community Services, Ms. Perton Dixon.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to remind council that we also have a recreation master plan that is being developed currently, which would give us feedback from the community as to what they would see as destinations and priorities, not only from a recreation perspective, but an A T perspective as well, which will tie into the Transportation Master Plan, the Active Transportation Master Plan. So there's a lot of planning that's happening right now, and we're gathering a lot of feedback from the community. And I think it would be really good to have these documents. When they're finalized, they'll be presented in that way, help council determine priorities moving forward.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perton Dixon. And one last comment, Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Thank you, your worship. I really appreciate the discussion that we've had here tonight about how, how we can make the community better, whether it's Richie Lake or Model Farm or any area in the town. So I would prepare to rescind that motion, and we can, I can move forward with the original motion amended to say that discussion, information be forwarded to staff for discussions, for further discussions.
Councilor Bigger, you seconded that. Are you okay with the rescinding of the initial motion and the amendment? So that motion was withdrawn? And would you mind reading the new motion, Ms. Snow?
Moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Counselor Bigger. The information be forwarded to staff for further discussion.
Does that meet with your approval, Deputy Mayor? All right, on the question, please. Please vote now. Motion carried six zero. Item number ten, bylaws. Proposed zoning bylaw amendment number zero three eight dash thirty-six. Rezoning application, Maple Ridge Estates. PID number twenty-three, one nine two eight. Rugged Residential, Inc. Proposed bare land condo cluster development off Corduroy Road, rural to multiple residential. Rob Vigor, owner, and Andrew Tool, professional engineer consultant. This is for consideration of third and final reading. Bylaw to be read in its entirety. Deputy, or sorry, Councilor Donovan.
Thank you. I would move that the third and final reading be given to proposed zoning bylaw amendment number zero three eight dash three six to rezon a parcel, parcel of land identified as P I D number two three one nine two eight, consisting of approximately eight point one hectares of a thirteen hectare parcel of Corduroy from rural R U to multiple residential R two, subject to the property owner entering into a development agreement pursuant to the provisions of section fifty-nine of the Community Planning Act.
It's been moved by Councilor Donovan. Seconded by Counselor Miller on the question. Counselor Miller, would you please read the bylaw?
Amendment number zero three eight dash three six to zoning bylaw number zero three eight. A bylaw of municipality of Quispam sis respecting zoning, being enacted by the council of town of Quispam sis, that zoning bylaw number zero three eight, a bylaw municipality of Quispam sis respecting zoning, is hereby amended as follows. By rezoning the following property from rural R U to multiple residential R two, subject to the property owner entering into a development agreement pursuant to the provisions of section fifty-nine of the Community Planning Act two thousand and seventeen, chapter nineteen. A parcel of land identified as PID number two three one nine two eight, consisting of approximately eight point one hectares of, of a thirteen hectare parcel off Corduroy Road, and further identified as Maple Ridge Estates Cargo Lane. Read first time May third, two thousand and twenty-two. Read second time, May third, two thousand and twenty-two. Read third and time and enacted Tuesday, September sixth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. It's been moved by Counselor Miller. And, sorry, moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Miller on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried six zero. Item number eleven, new business. There isn't any item number twelve, reports. Counselor Olson.
Yes, your worship, I would move we receive and file reports.
It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier on the question. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Thank you, your worship. I'm referring to twelve C, the Active Transportation Trail. So my question is to, through you, to the Director of Community Services. I, I took a little drive down there today to see exactly where it was. I thought I knew where it was, and it is. So are we going to connect, it comes down, like it sort of curves up to Montana? Like, are we going to connect the two from where the bridge is to that trail on Montana? Is that what it is? I'm not clear.
Thank you. Ms. Perton Dixon.
Your worship, the connection will actually be where the trail originally intended to, to go. But we went up to the end of Selkirk because of delays with the developer and developing that street in that area. So if you're walking down the trail, it's easier to explain from that perspective. If you're walking down the Q R trail towards the lagoon, you turn up and you're going up to Selkirk. There's a bridge. Just before the bridge, you, you would go right, well, or straight through, and it's going to connect on to Montana there. So it's a future street that it will be connected to. So due to the interest in active living, and we expect in the future that we will be paving or plowing, excuse me, and, and sanding a trail in the future, this makes it easier for us to do that. So we can contract out a snow removal company that would start at, behind the Col de Peignay and plow two kilometers straight through and come out on Montana. So some of our challenges, as I've mentioned before, are the bridges with regard to snow removal trail, which is why we use a groomer. And so that's why we're looking to relocate that active transportation connection and put it in its original location, which is just below where the bridge is.
Thank you. And one follow-up from Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Thank you. I just want to follow up on that. So if we do it, we do it for this year or for the spring, is the timeline. Number one, I'm wondering what the timeline is. And number two is, you talk about paving it or grooming it in the winter, or grooming it in the winter. Is that possible when it's gravel to do that?
So, yes, your worship, we actually groom between eight and ten kilometers of trail now. That's gravel down around the Cuplex and the Q R trail. So this would be a section that would be plowed. We would hire out a contractor to do that. And sorry, what was your other question? You had a couple there. Pardon? Oh, the timeline would be constructed this fall. So we would be making a proposal in the budget for a contractor to plow that throughout the winter. This winter.
Thank you, Ms. Perton Dixon. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schreier. All right, and we have a motion, I believe. It's been moved by Counselor Olson and seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier that reports be received and filed. You had another question?
I have a topic. Thank you, your worship. I'm wondering about item H, the Town Treasurer Report. The financial statements, it looks like we will continue to run the deficit to the end of the year. And I'm wondering, through you, to, Krista, is how do, how will we deal with this deficit when we're looking at the budget in the next couple of weeks? Can you explain that process as how we'll, we'll move forward with dealing with that?
We'll go now to the Town Treasurer, Ms. Brandon.
So we won't be specifically talking about this year's potential deficit in the, the budget. So if we did have a deficit, it would carry forward to two years. So it would impact then in the two thousand and twenty-four budget. My goal is always, you know, we do have items in the budget for reserve transfers and whatnot. If we did have a deficit, I would hope to anticipate this by the time we do our year-end reserve transfers. And I would transfer some of the money that's sitting in our general operating reserve. That is what the general operating reserve is for, is to, is for these times when we have, you know, again, unforeseen kind of circumstances with supply chain issues, cost increases, inflation, all of those things that we're kind of seeing on a, on a daily basis. And again, depending on where we end up this winter, if we have any more significant storms before the end of the year, we'll try to mitigate the deficit as much as possible by drawing down some money from our general operating reserve to offset that. Any other amount surplus or deficit would be carried forward in two years, so in two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you, Ms. Brandon. And certainly with, with all that we've gone through over the past couple of years, with the increase in pricing and supply chain challenges and so forth, prices have gone up and continue to rise. And that hits everyone, not only within our families, but also within our workplaces. So I'm happy to say that we do have a reserve, and that will probably be called upon at, at some point to help mitigate some of the, some of the expenses. So we do have a motion on the table, moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried six zero. Item number thirteen, business arising from committee of the whole. There is none. Item number fourteen. Hope everybody enjoys the, the weather that we've been experiencing. Also, I'd just like to caution, as was said earlier, school is back in. School buses are on the road. Students at all ages are returning to their places of education. And it's really important that we are mindful of safety and of people on the road, children that, that may not always look before they cross the street. So I'm looking for an adjournment, please. Counselor Donovan.
I'd move that the meeting be adjourned.
It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Olson on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried six zero. Have a good evening, everyone.